And we do pre-meeting end here, as Steve Caffey had said. So, and actually Ray brought it up last week, or two weeks ago, as to why we're here. And so, here we are, somewhat back to normal again. So, we'll start off financial.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Very nice to see you all tonight, be with you. We do have the audit for fiscal year 20, I get it mixed up, fiscal year 20, to deliver to you tonight. The Finance Committee has reviewed the audit, and we had some very engaged conversation with regard to much of its contents. The audit is one without qualifications, which is very good. However, it does have findings, and our goal is to have zero findings. And so, with regard to the audit, its contents, and with respect to moving forward in terms of getting rid of findings, I've asked our new CFO, Jill Johnson, to address some of those things with you tonight in this forum, if that's appropriate.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, council members. Thank you for having me here tonight. As the City Manager has suggested, the audit was challenging, to say the least, but we did receive an unqualified opinion. That is one of the best opinions that we can receive on our financial statement audit. So, as we look back on the year, our governmental activities, which includes the general fund, it actually ended up a little bit lower than it was in 2019, about $3.1 million in net positions. When we look at our business-type activities, that one actually did it very well. We were actually $9 million better than 2019 on our business-type activities, which includes our utilities. So, overall, we actually did very well as a city, even though we had a pandemic, even though we were worried about sales tax and revenue and everything else, things actually turned out okay. When we look at our sales tax, we actually did end up just slightly lower, about $284,000, which when you look at the big picture of $35 million, that's not too bad. So, I think overall, the city did very well. When we look at the general fund just by itself, our revenues, they actually were slightly lower than 2019, about $303,000, and our expenditures were a little bit higher, about $3.3 million. But overall, we still had more revenue than we had expense, so we did not use any of our reserves. So, that's fantastic. I want to talk a little bit about, as the City Manager had alluded to, the CFA. So, our Schedule of Federal Expendit-- I always mess this up. Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards, it's a CFA, is what it's called. It's a report that we give to the federal government, which tells them how we spent our federal funds. It's required, it's not optional. But the auditors also opine on that. Our opinion on the CFA was unmodified, which again, is the best opinion we can receive, which is fantastic. Even though we did receive an unmodified opinion, we do have several findings. These findings have been in 2019, we have them again in 2020. There were four findings this year, and I want to talk a little bit about the findings and what we plan to do to go forward. We do not plan on having these findings again in 2021. As we alluded to, we did have a lot of transition over the past two years. We had an accounting system that we changed, so that led to a little bit of angst and challenges. We also had some personnel changes. So, we had some pretty major personnel changes, and with each personnel change that we did, we increased the knowledge of financial reporting in our division. So, that's fantastic. So, as we move forward, I'm expecting this team of very qualified people to get rid of these findings, and that is our plan. With that, did you guys have any questions?
Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, by the way.
Thank you.
No, sir. Okay, thank you.
Move on to Hogedon and Ice Arena rates, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Continuing our, kind of our programmatic discussion pertaining to our leisure services and their corresponding rates, we would like to visit with you a little bit about Hogedon and the Ice Arena. You'll find in Mr. Cortez's report that indeed, we have not addressed these rate strategies since 2017. And so, it's our opinion that indeed, these kinds of things be addressed periodically, and you'll certainly find pursuant to a council goal along these lines possibly, that we're going to go into a lot more depth with respect to the role that rates can have in terms of helping us to recover as much of our subsidy payments out of the general fund as possible. So, this is not the last that you'll hear of these conversations, but nonetheless, we do recommend some slight modifications to the rate structure in both the Hogedon and the Ice Arena operation. And with that, if I could invite Mr. Cortez to give you some of that detail, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in your packet, I have a number of attachments that'll kind of show you kind of the homework that we do. And we do that homework regularly, meaning, you know, at least annually, and we're always tracking and stuff, the seasons come in and out, try to determine what's being some of our competitors around the region are doing. A lot of times, we're trying to compare apples and oranges sometimes because some of our facilities have no competition, say, within the city of Casper. So, you take a look at something like the Ice Arena, for instance, there's really no other place to go. You can talk about Hogedon, same thing. But we do take a look at that all the time. I think that the reason that we've seen this kind of go without being addressed for, you know, three years, four years, is just because it seems like there's never a good time to talk about increasing fees, meaning, two years ago, it was the downturn in the energy sector, you know. Last year, it was COVID. This year, we could still say we're kind of having a COVID hangover or whatever, but it's my feeling, and the staff's feeling, that we probably need to do something now to address it, so that we can start talking about those deeper conversations and how to properly step in those increases to continue what council has, you know, really directed, myself and the managers, to create more of that pay-to-play environment. So, you'll see in those attachments, I'm not going to go through them line by line, but you can see my memo, that it's material, especially in the area of Hogedon. And we're not really increasing fees, per se, on Hogedon, we're just decreasing the amount of discount that we give people when they sign up for a season pass before December 1st. So, instead of giving them, you know, 50% discount to come in before December 1st, we're saying, instead of that, you're going to pay more, but you're still going to pay less, meaning there's still value to coming in and seeing us before December 1st, because we do view that as hedging our bets, if you will, a little bit, because we never know what the snow's going to end up being. Two years ago, we had 100% opening, first week in December was awesome. And then this last year, we opened up the second week in December, and we were probably more along the lines of, you know, 40% opening. So, you know, we do want people, especially our locals, to be coming up and buying season passes early, but however, we don't really see the need for such a huge discount. In the Ice Arena, we have a handful of discounts that are kind of going away, and we've increased fees, but all of those fees pretty much are in line with what we see around the region, meaning, that's what they charge in a neighboring municipality within the state of Wyoming. So, it's a couple bucks here, a couple bucks there, but at the end of the day, those couple bucks, they add up with the folks that show up, and so you're talking about another, you know, 13,000, 14,000 there, projected. With that, I would just mention that the Leisure Services Board has been made aware of these changes, they went through them as well, and they feel good that the rates adjustments are justified. With that, I would take any questions while I have.
Councilman Nell.
Thank you. Mayor, just one, Tim, they, we shut down, I suppose at our normal time this year, right in time for us to get a bunch of extra snow, and it seems like our snow seasons are getting later and later each year. Have we looked at maybe, in order to recoup some of that revenue, to stay in open a little later, to where we're utilizing these late snows that we're getting?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, great question. It's come up, you know, probably every year, you know, that I've been here. And what we've found is, the first year I came, and we got a really late start. And so, to answer that question, I said, hey, let's stay open a week later, because we had a late snow, let's stay open a week later and just see what happens, let's see what the turnout is. And we basically broke even on it. So, we didn't really lose money, but we really didn't gain anything. My staff that's been around a lot longer than I have, you know, they said, well, what typically happens is people start getting excited for spring, so as soon as we get those first couple nice weekends in March or whatever, people are done with skiing for the most part. They're like, I'm going to start cleaning out my boat, I'm going to start getting ready for, you know, spring and summer. And so, that's typically been the experience that we've seen, whether we stay open late or not. It seems like there's always some people that are big-time skiers, and they're like, it's a great snow, why aren't we open? You know, we do get those comments, but at the end of the day, we don't really make any money. It's either a lose more money, or you might break even type scenario.
Councilman Gamar.
Thanks, Tim. I have a couple of questions, if, you know, I don't want to monopolize the conversation, but the 25% increase to the preseason passes, will that, has there been any sort of analysis, if there, you know, if it's possible, of whether that's sticker shock? You know, you said preseason has typically been to hedge your bets. Has there been some sort of analysis to determine that 25% increase? How many of those people might not buy those preseason passes? And, you know, if we have a bad snow year, and we have reduced, you know, regular season passes, I imagine, you know, you guys have thought about that, but just curious, you know, where you landed on all of it.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, it's kind of one of those things, you kind of have to take a leap of faith, and you hope that the homework pans out, because at the end of the day, you really don't know. We do take comfort, though, that we still position ourselves nicely within the region as far as pricing goes, even with the increased price, you know, I should say, reduced discount, we're still right where we need to be, we feel. Second thing is, we get good value on season passes, regardless if you buy them pre-year or post-December 1st, because they get, we do have reciprocity agreements around the region, meaning, they can take their season pass from Hogedon and present that at another facility, and they can get a discount. I can't recite what those facilities are, but there's a handful of them. So, we still think that, we're still driving people and providing good value to people to say, hey, come buy a season pass. And if you can save 50 bucks, buy it, line up before December 1st, then we just think that that's just added value. I hope I answered your question.
You did, thank you. One more, if that's--
Yep.
Thanks, Mayor. I've heard from several constituents about why we don't have a management company like Spectra take over Hogedon, was just curious, you know, have we explored that, and, you know, what were the results of that exploration?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I would say that we're in the initial stages of kind of that exploration. I think they definitely have their foot in the door with regarding the food and beverage operation, it's already up there. So, we've talked about that a little bit with Brad Murphy, you know, who's our local contact basically for Spectra, to kind of get their brain a little bit. I think with their contract coming up due in the next, oh, year and a half, I think there's potential there to have further discussions, if it makes any sense, to bundle it, if you will, and have the numbers work out, and still feel like we're going to have the experience and the oversight that we feel like we need. But do keep in mind, when we do hire a management company, we still incur all the expenses and mensa. You know, we don't, it'd be awesome if, like, they took on, like, the salaries of all the people that have to work up there, but that's not the case at all. We still have to pay for all that. Now, we got to pay for their expertise on top of it. I think the questions then become, does it make sense? And that's what we haven't answered yet, but I look forward to getting those answers and providing them all for you.
Councilman Cathy.
Just to back up what Mr. Cortez said, is I spent 14 years up there on the ski patrol, and as he was talking about, you get those last couple of weekends, and there's almost more ski patrollers than there are people up there, because, yeah, they're 70-degree days, and you're going, wow, yeah, great snow, but everybody is out at the lake. And so, yeah, that's, I can definitely back up what he's saying from watching that happen. So, yeah. And along those same lines, he was talking about other ski areas. I didn't get over to Jackson this year, but last year, when I went over to Jackson, I think, like, season passes were like 130, 140 bucks. With my senior discount, with my senior pass, I got full-day lift tickets to Jackson for 70 bucks. So, if you go anywhere else, I think snowy range reciprocates with us.
Yes.
And, yeah, so, you can ski, you can ski Wyoming at a discount.
Councilman Nell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make it clear that we're not raising rates at Hogedon, we are, we're just lessening the discount on the season pass, and it's important that we say that again, because when we raised the swimming rates 50 cents, we got an awful lot of flack over 50 cents, trying to help there. So, like you said, it's a pay-to-play, and we're just trying to find ways to help alleviate, but I know that 50 cents cost us a lot of heartache. So, that's all I have. Thank you, Tim.
Councilmember Pollock, and then I'll come back to you.
I just want some clarification, then, because looking at this chart, it actually looks like some of the tickets are proposed, actual rate increase versus a discount.
Mm-hmm.
Not all of them, not adult season passes, but I'm looking at kind of further down the list, some of that full-day and half-day passes, looking at a relatively large increase, like 30, 30-something percent? Is that correct?
Yeah, so that is, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, that is correct. So, not quite where you're at. I would say the bulk of what we'll see in additional revenue is exactly what Councilman Nell said, you know, we're just reducing that discount, but we do have some passes that we just need to bring into alignment with the overall market, what we're seeing around the region.
Okay.
So, it is a basket on both sides, whether we're talking Ice Arena or Hogedon, there are some fees that are going up a couple bucks here and there, but the vast majority of what you've got in front of you tonight is just from the reduction that we'll be given a discount of to early-season pass holders.
Councilman Gamar.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Pollock took half my comment, which was, I did see those increases in the other areas, so just wanted to make sure we were mindful of that. But it's been a long time since I've been up to the slopes, I used to go a lot a long time ago, and now I just can't seem to be able to afford it these days. But, so I'd be curious to hear perspectives of people, you know, like Councilman Cathy, that seem to do a lot of it. Is it fair to say that, I think I've only been a snow king in Jackson once, but, well, I mean, I noticed some of our rates at Hogedon, they're just several dollars shy of snowking, and I wonder, quality-wise, you know, is that in line? Because it seemed like, I guess my understanding is that snowking is, you know, you know, it's Jackson, so I guess my impression was very, very nice ritzy, whereas, you know, I guess I'd just like some clarification on that. Do the people that do it regularly, snow and ski regularly, will they think that's a fair price? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I would be interested in maybe hearing what Councilman Cathy thinks as well, but we see it as kind of a trade-off, meaning, from this room, I can be up there in 20, 25 minutes and ski, and I can be back down here and grab something to eat, and you know, take a shower. So, there's a convenience there versus, you go to Jackson, you're going to have to pay for a hotel room and eating out and all that stuff. So, we just have the feeling that if they're going to do that, they're going to do it. You know, they're going to say, hey, we're going to make a weekend of it, and we're going to put a thousand bucks in our pocket, and we're going to go to Jackson. But I'd rather them stay here, heck yeah, I would, but I think another important factor to draw out, that my memo points out, is for them to get their money back, a local person, I'm thinking of local people, for them to get their money back out of that season pass, they don't have to go up and visit us six, seven times, and at that point, they're kind of skiing for free, you know. So, do people get their value, I'm sure some families do, I see them up there regularly, I hear about them going up regularly, like, every weekend, or, I mean, they get their use out of that pass. But we have a similar scenario at the golf course, for instance, you know, we have people that are golfing every day, and it's like, after a while, they're making money, you know, it seems like. And so, you know, I'm sure it's all over the board, Councilman, so I'd hate to be more specific than that, but we just acknowledge there's a trade-off there in the convenience and what they get. And at the end of the day, those hardcore skiers for us, at the end of the day, we're just trying to make the facility more sustainable. And to do that, we have to get the fees more in line with the expenses and continue that pay-to-play environment, unfortunately.
Sure. Thank you.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim, could you remind me, without a doubt, the savings or the, I should say, the gains that you expect in the revenue assumes that all of your consumption behaviors remain at least the same, right? In order for us to see those values come forward in the form of reduced subsidies. What is that subsidy that we're currently dealing with, and tell us what this would drop to if those purchasing behaviors remained the same?
I don't have that in here. I would say that that, it depends on what year it is. We've seen the subsidy drop over the past two years. Two years ago, because we had excellent snow, collected a lot of revenue upfront, I want to say that put us, you know, around the three, a little over $300,000. And then this last year, we had good revenue, mostly because COVID, and we were one of the few places that didn't require a reservation and basically a ticket to come on property. You know, we said, hey, if you show up, the only limitation is coming into our lodge. We had a lot of people from out of town coming to visit us. I haven't seen the final numbers, but I'm going to say that we're just below 300,000 for the subsidy. You take this into account, and then we're getting, you know, probably around that 200,000-ish where our investment is. So, this would make, this would be by far a really good stroke for us to really take a bite, I would say a third out of that subsidy.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for pointing that out, Tim, because if indeed we are serious about, you know, reducing the dependency that funds like this have on the general fund, the operations of the general fund, we have to take measures like this, and this one's relatively painless, because we're talking about reducing the discount in order to get the lion's share of that savings into our books. And so, or I should say, the reduction in the subsidy into our books. But that, getting a third removed is a really big stroke in terms of the array of subsidies that you have to deal with and manage. So, decisions like this, however, are needed even more, if in fact, we are serious about taking away operational subsidies.
Just as a side note, a very good friend of mine, he's became a good friend of mine since he moved here, but he's the new pro at Three Grounds, and him and his wife love to ski, and they, they're just beside themselves that they can drive 15 minutes and have a slope like this. And I think it goes to show what a nice facility it is, and I think we have a lot of spoiled people around here that don't really appreciate what we have, and they bitch about it a lot, but the truth is, when somebody from out of town comes in and utilizes that almost every weekend and tells me how fantastic it is, and they're from California, where there's some great slopes there, that speaks well for us in Casper, because they, they just can't believe in 15 minutes they can be on a slope like that. They love it. So, good for us, and, you know, and like you said, if we're going to be serious about it, it's time to start doing this, and we're not charging anybody really any extra money, we're just lessening the discount a little bit. That sure is a win-win, as far as I could see. Okay. Thank you. Do you have anything on agenda review?
Not that I need you further for.
Okay. All right. We'll go out and start our meeting then. All right, before we begin this evening, I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cell phones at this time, and I now call the April 20th, 2021 regular council meeting to order. The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, excuse the absence of Councilman Johnson.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Pollock, second by Councilman Cathy. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have recently lost two former mayors. Robert L. Pettigrew Jr. passed away on March 25th of 2021. He served on the City Council from 1973 to 1977, and as the mayor from 1975 to 1976. Bob served on numerous boards and committees throughout his life. Robert Hildebrand passed away yesterday at the age of 101. He served on the City Council from 1961 to 1972, and is mayor from 1967 to 1968. He was a preacher for the Church of Christ as well, until he was 98, for a total of 68 years. Both of these gentlemen lived their lives thinking of other people and how they could help them. They each left their individual mark on the city in different ways, and Casper is better for their involvement and caring. So, please join me in a moment of silence. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve, by minute action, the minutes of the April 6th, 2021 regular council meeting is published in the Casper Star Tribune on April 14th, 2021.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Nell, second by Councilwoman Lutz. Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve, by minute action, the minutes of the April 6th, 2021 executive session.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, second by Councilwoman Ingredson. Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve, by minute action, the April 20th, 2021 Bills and Claims, as audited by City Manager Napier.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Pollock, second by Councilman Nell. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
We are pleased to welcome Angela Emery, Executive Director of the Platte River Trails Trust, to the meeting this evening. Ms. Emery is here to present the city with a check for the Poplar Street bumpouts. Ms. Emery, please tell us more about your fundraising efforts in this project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Angela Emery, I'm the Executive Director of the Platte River Trails Trust, and I'm joined this evening by David Huff, our Board Chair. We are here today to let council know that we delivered a check for $100,000 to the city last week for the Poplar Street Bridge bumpouts. Several years ago, when we learned that YDOT was going to be reconstructing the bridge there, along with city staff, we understood and felt that improvements needed to be made to this once-in-a-lifetime project, encouraging city staff who were willing along the way to include 10-foot wide sidewalks on both sides of the bridge, and then our contribution was the bumpouts. We do feel that this will improve pedestrian safety and will be a wonderful view as people come into our city from the Poplar and I-25 exit. The way we raised this money was from our 2019 Year in Giving letter, we were able to raise $50,000 from that effort. Those funds came from, significant funds came from our own board, other members of the community who also saw the benefit of this project. All of the revenue from the 2019 Riverfest event that we have been doing for almost 30 years now, were directed towards this project, and then other funds that-- years now were directed towards this project and then other funds that we raised individually. So we're so pleased that this project is going to be constructed and that construction will begin this summer. Do you want to say anything?
Thank you. Your Honor, counsel, I just simply wanted to echo what Angela said and thank the city and YDOT for working with us on a redesign to incorporate the bump outs. And it's been a, a real bottleneck for all these years and people who are on bicycles and on foot not being able to cross the river at that location. And with the enhancement dollars that the city is dedicating to the sidewalks, plus the bump outs, we're thinking that's going to really be an asset for people wanting to move through that area on foot or on a bicycle. So thank you for your support.
Okay. And we are pleased to welcome representatives from Serve, Wyoming tonight. I would like to welcome Shelley McAlpin and Carrie Owen. Would you care to say a few words?
Mayor, hi, everyone, city council. I'm going to ask all of Serve, Wyoming to join me since I came here today. I wanted to start by thanking you all for recognizing national service again this year. We had upwards of 800 AmeriCorps members. And as many of you know, they dedicate up to a year of their life of service for our state. Upon the end of their service year, they receive an education award. In total, since its inception in 94, we've been able to raise $8 million in education awards for these AmeriCorps members. So excited to be able to provide you with that information and let you also know that in addition to their normal AmeriCorps assignments throughout the state of Wyoming, typically in education, environmental stewardship, domestic violence support, after-school programming and so on, AmeriCorps members have been really helpful in addressing critical needs with COVID. Chances are that if you've been in a clinic, you've seen an AmeriCorps member interfaced with them in some capacity. But in addition, they've helped with people who are sheltering in place, especially with the elderly population this year. So very proud of what they've been able to accomplish for our state. These ladies that work for me are also AmeriCorps alumni, so they too have dedicated a year of their life to service for our country and for our state. So with that, I just appreciate your time and again honoring and recognizing national service.
Okay. We'll move on to communications. Now is the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we ask the following. Please state your name and address. Direct all questions, comments to the mayor and only the mayor. No personal attacks on staff or council will be tolerated. Council will not respond to personnel matters. These will be referred to as city manager. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by council members. Presentations will be limited to five minutes and duplication of speakers will not be allowed nor will time extensions be permitted. Please note that public hearings and ordinances each have their own comment period, so please hold your comments on these items until we reach them. Is there anybody who would like to speak to council?
Miley Jemike, 742 North Jefferson. I wanted to give, with the council and, and Mr. Mayor, on a hardship that, that I personally have been having and, apparently the community itself has been also having on senior citizens. And that is the leash law. I have tried and tried and tried with no success without hurting myself and, and my, my animal to be part of the community, though, just like everyone else is. After my last fall, I, I said no more. And I, I started training, training my pet to do commands that he, he, he doesn't, he doesn't stray off, he doesn't, he doesn't go across the sidewalk until I say okay and on and on and on. The other day, I got, I got a ticket for a dog, a large, and I tried to explain to her my, my personal problems and my medical problems. And she really didn't care. She was going to put my, my dog in a cage. I wasn't going to go, go for that. That's, that's, that's like putting your child in jail. It's not going to happen. So we had a big deal and there was a couple other officers that came and finally I suggested, why don't you just put him in your truck? And that way he won't be in the cage. If, if that's what you would have, have to do. And, and, and she did. And the other officers come and there was a, there was a lady officer that I got a habit of put my, hands in my pockets. Guess that's not, not allowed. But she was going to throw me in jail for that. And the other officer said, well, hold on a minute. He said he didn't have anything on. He didn't even have his, he don't even have his ID. I said, you can, you can, you can press me. And he did. And I didn't have anything. And she had been, she had been the, the...
One minute, sir.
The animal control, she, she wanted to... I'm just, I'm just at a stand, standstill. Now I gotta, I gotta have surgery on my eyes, eyes, eyes again because of my fall. My, it messed up this eye here and I had cataracts in it a few, a few years earlier and it, it all moved. And it was all, all because of trying to abide by a ridiculous law that I should be in complete control of myself.
I'm going to have to have you wrap it up.
That's, that's basically all I have to, I have to say here. I just, there is about a year and a half ago, there was a, there was a deal in the Casper Channel 13 that 80, 85% of the, of the hospitalizations that was having to do with going to the hospital, having to do with, having to, having your, your dog on a leash was senior citizens, 85%. I, I think there should be some kind of revision for people that are older or, and people that are handicapped. I mean, that, that don't seem like too much, too much to ask to me.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Sure.
Keith Rollins, 542 South Durbin.
Mr. Rollins, could you hold on just one second, please? Sorry, Rollins. I, I apologize. I was trying to catch you before the gentleman walked out. Sorry to hear about his health problems. I hope they get better, but from what I... Are you still in the room?
He's in the back.
Oh, perfect. All right. Thank you. So again, sorry to hear about your health concerns. I hope they get better. From what I gathered, you had issue with the leash law because senior citizens have hard times walking their animals. And I can certainly empathize with that, but I also wanted to remind you of Lake McKenzie and also Morad Park. They're both off-leash areas, recreational areas for dogs in the city. So if you're not familiar, I just wanted to make sure you were aware. But again, wish you well with your health and thanks for coming to speak this evening.
Mr. Rollins, go ahead.
Drop it in like that. Keith Rollins, 542 South Durbin. I was very disappointed with the presentation last week by Advanced Casper. I think the city needs a salesperson selling the city. We need somebody who's dynamic, engaging, has a personality, outgoing, because the presentation I heard reminded me of someone reciting the IRS code. It was not a presentation that would encourage people to move businesses here, if they interact with them, or any other thing else with, you know, raising funds or whatever. I think that we should consider moving the position in-house with one person hired over the salary of maybe over 60, 80 to $1,000 per year, whatever is needed. I think a local real estate salesperson might be an excellent candidate for this because they're already in the area of relocation and development, et cetera. And sales, real estate salespeople have a selling personality, which this person clearly did not have. I also think the money that we spend on Advanced Casper can be reallocated then to marketing. As was pointed out, $50,000 is nothing for marketing. I think the extra money, the difference in savings from having one person in-house versus the total amount that we give to Advanced Casper can be better used for marketing. I also think that we might want to bring it in-house, just like you're bringing CATSIE in-house. There's, you want to have control over it. Plus, has anybody ever seen an audited statement? Has the city ever audited Advanced Casper or the Economic Development Joint Powers Board? I don't see, I've never seen an audit. We don't know how they're spending our money. I also think that a real estate person is probably very good at cold calling. We need an aggressive campaign, not just having people call us, we need to contact them. And I also think we need to contact people who maybe have moved, rather, companies that have moved and relocated someplace and ask them, why did you pick Knoxville, Tennessee, for example? Find out why businesses are located in certain areas. We have no idea what's going on here. This guy has no concept of what marketing is all about. I also think he gave, was a very deceitful and that he did not disclose that his, there was other money coming in from the county. That total dollar amount he gave did not include the money from the county. The county gives about a third of their budget also. So it's actually even higher. And if you total up the county, the cities and the private sector, and all they can do is bring two businesses into Casper for last year and one of them only had 50 employees that have, you know, $12, $15 customer service rep positions, it's like having two McDonald's. And I think we also make, need to make a distinction between do we support the concept of having Advanced Casper versus do we support Advanced Casper itself? Because for the last 15 years, I've been utterly against them because I don't see any results. I'm a results person. You're spending $12 million of our taxpayers' money over the last 15 years and you haven't, there's almost no results I can see, tangible results of businesses coming here solely because of Advanced Casper. There is no results. And anytime you ask them, they say, oh, we can't discuss this, we can't discuss that. You know, Dallas layer tried to get financial figures from them and they balked at them. You know, we don't actually go and work for the city. We work for the Joint Powers Board. We don't have to give you anything. Time and time again, I've been trying to get figures from them. They will not give us any. How much time, one minute?
One minute.
Okay. And I also think that people are assuming, just because certain people are sort of associated with the company, brother and brother, or on the board of directors, it's positive. Remember, companies like Lehman Brothers had some of the top economists, financial people in the world and they still went belly up. You cannot take any retail position of, oh, they have great board members, therefore it's a good investment. The same thing here. Just because they have great board members does not mean that they actually accomplish anything. I think we really need to bring it in-house. That's it.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to address council?
Good evening. My name is Lou Grunwald. I am presently the Board President of CATSIE and I'm here to make a few statements. As the council is aware, there's a great division going on right now. On the 20th of January, I am myself and Steve Kurtz was called to the city council, part of the offices here, and presented with some letters that we had, were basically forced to sign to put our director and our accountant on administrative leave, which is what we done because we were told we had no choice. If we didn't sign, it wouldn't make any difference, they'd do it anyway. At that time, we went to the office. I did present the letters to both John and Don and told them what was going on. And I had no idea at that time what the, what was actually going on. We just guessed there was some, being propriety. The letter stated that they were missing several thousands of dollars of money for the transportation system. So we put them on administrative leave and city staff decided to rifle through our files and whatnot, took keys, credit cards. Following day, tried to access our bank accounts, which I consider a hostile takeover or hostile try. And we tried to speak to the city. Nobody wants to speak to us. An audit was ordered and the cover page, I don't know if any of you've read it or not, the cover page specifically states that this was not an audit. It was a forensic look at the, at the accounting, but it was not an audit. Only way a total audit can be done is if both our books and the city books that have to do with CATSIE are both audited together because they intertwine. And that was not done, so there's no audit. At this point in time, we've been shut out of... At this point in time, we've been shut out of the Black Cat system and state, we cannot finish our books, we cannot provide any kind of financial statements totally because we are not allowed in. We have contracts with Mills and Evansville, we can't access the Black Cat to do their paperwork, which has nothing to do with the city. So we're kind of at a standstill. Several of the things that have come up, the transfer is going to be really tough to do because city staff Friday night to one of our employees made the comment that we need every employee at Katzy to stay in place because we don't know how to run the system, and that's a fact, and we'd like that to be addressed. We have asked in a letter to both the city manager and the attorney that you give us, if, this is going to happen, we know that, but you give us till the end of the fiscal year so that we can do the books properly and have a full accounting to keep the, keep us from getting a major black eye over this, because the forensic accounting that was done found no charges of any kind, no infoprobities. I think you've all, I don't know if you've all read that letter, it was a cover letter to the audit, the supposed audit. So we're asking that you put this thing on hold and make a transition, because if it doesn't, without all the staff and a good transfer, the clients in Casper, Wyoming are going to suffer. That includes all the people that ride the Dada Ride, the bus system will be saved because it is on a regular schedule, the other side of it is very tough to control and needs the right people, the right information, and without that, those people are going to be left sitting at home, they'll miss their dialysis and whatever else they have to do will be missed because the city does not have the qualified people to operate the system. I believe uh if you read the pass out I give, gives all the rest of the information along with the letter the city received, has it Friday. I hope that you will look at it very closely and decide how you're going to treat this situation. I've been on this board for thirty-one years, I've been president for the last ten, and I feel that this has actually been a threat to homeless to me because of the time I spent on this, and I feel that we need to be able to speak to the city, and the city needs to speak to us in order to resolve this and bring it to a good closing, and at this point in time, that is not going on. At a meeting a month ago with the city manager, myself, Steve Kurtz, Ron Palmerly, the two of our other board members, Mr. Napier, I told him, I says, if they want to run this system, why don't the city make it a department? And he told me, quote, "We cannot afford to run Katzy," quote unquote, and that's what he said, sir. "We cannot afford to operate it." Correct?
Thank you, sir.
Tell me, am I correct?
Sir.
You did say that.
Sir, you need to address me. Point of order, you need to address me, not my city manager.
All right, no problem.
Okay.
I'm just asking if he actually said that.
You need to address me, not the city manager.
Would you ask him if he said it?
No, I will not.
Fine.
Anybody have anything that they would like to ask?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right.
Is there anybody else who would like to address counsel, and I will remind everybody that questions are to be addressed to myself, not to anybody else, and there will be no attacks upon any staff members, period. Is there anybody else who would like to address counsel? Please read the consent agenda titles.
Establishing May fourth, twenty twenty-one is the public hearing date for the consideration of the following three items. Item nine A one A, the replat creating Harmony Hills Edition number three. Item nine A one B, the replat creating Kensington Heights Edition number three, and item nine A one C, a new restaurant liquor license number forty to Yang and Zhang, Inc., doing business as Lime Leaf Asian Bistro.
The chair would entertain a motion to, by amendment action, establish the public hearing dates just read.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman McCarthy, second by Councilwoman Lutz. Any abstention or nay votes?
Like to abstain from item one C, please.
And I will abstain from item nine A one and nine A one B.
And I am abstaining from nine A one A and nine A one B.
Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With the abstentions of councilmembers Pollock and Inger Brethson, as well as Mayor Frill, noted, motion passed.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the ordinance amending various sections of chapter ten point three six, parking of the Casper municipal code. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, Mayor. One exhibit, correspondence from John Henley to the city of, to the Casper City Council and Jay Carter Napier dated April sixteen, twenty twenty-one.
Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a culmination of a lot of discussion among all of you and conversation, of course, with respect to your constituents and whatnot, and accordingly, you have essentially two phases of this to consider as it relates to incorporating the ideas that you've proposed here, which are primarily with regard to parking in the community and considering parking issues differently. The first of which would be the ordinance adjustment that you have in front of you tonight, and that would be considered on first reading. The second would be with regard to a resolution that we would suggest you take up in the third reading portion of this process, that not only incorporates other elements of this conversation, but also puts into motion the the parking manual that has been worked on in concert with this comprehensive conversation. The ordinance, however, that you are starting your consideration for this evening, in our opinion accomplishes three things. First of all, and primarily, it relates to the use of parkways in the community, specifically with regard to Twelfth and Thirteenth Street, as parking areas potentially for adjacent property owners along those corridors. Secondly, this also considers or redefines, if you will, the way in which public streets can be used for RV parking as well. And then finally, as I alluded to, the ordinance also has a role in re-engaging the parkway, excuse me, the parking manual that is referred to in the proposal that we have in front of you, and with regard to its update in the future, thereby not necessitating a change in ordinance every time that the parking manual might change by policy or other caveat. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, we would also suggest that the the ambiguity that has been in place with regard to several of these issues would would no longer be that way in that we believe this ordinance would give very clear direction to staff for enforcement purposes and make those questions much more clear if indeed this this proposal moves forward, passed the third reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issues involving parking, please approach the lectern. Okay, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issues involving parking to please approach the lectern. Okay, there being no one to speak for or against the issues involving parking, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending various sections of chapter ten point three six, parking of the Casper municipal code.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading, the ordinance just read.
Still moved. Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, second by Councilman Nell. Discussion? Councilman Nell.
I would just like to go on record, I've received six emails this week concerning the parking, and the only, all six of them literally said the same thing, they don't want to see any trees removed, so I want to make sure that the public understands that there will absolutely be no trees removed without going through the city arborist, the tree would have to be damaged or dead. This is just to help improve areas where there are no trees and give people an opportunity to park, and maybe that'll help curb some of the emails and put some people, give them some rest in their mind, so.
Councilmember Pollock.
Along those same lines, I've received a lot of emails in that same vein as well, and I also share those concerns. My only hesitation is that we, that what are we going to do if somebody does remove a tree? There's really nothing in this ordinance that outlines like what penalty would exist or what sort of enforcement opportunities would be at the disposal of the city or the PD or whoever would need to handle that, so I do think we probably need to address that in this ordinance if we are going to move forward with parkway parking. I think we're leaving a bit of a gap if we don't explicitly lay out what would happen if somebody did take out a tree, and just sort of leaving it like, well, you can't do it, but leaving it at that, I think that's insufficient, so I suggest maybe we could draft some sort of amendment. I mean, I hate to put in, try to put in, you know, penalties and and do all that sort of thing, but I do think we've got to have something in there if we're going to say it's not allowed.
Councilman Gamros.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's a great point, Councilwoman Pollock, not something I had considered myself. I wonder if there's an opportunity for us to refer to some ordinance already on the books, you know, we don't have to create the penalty structure, we can just refer to a different ordinance about defacing city property or something like that, but I do think, I would agree, it needs addressed. Thank you.
Councilman Nell.
Can we ask the city attorney, I believe there is an ordinance on the book that prohibits the removal of trees on city property, but I would have to refer to John.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, councilmembers. In fact, we do have ordinances on this. At the last session of the council, the, not session, at the last incarnation of council before some of you were elected, we had an arborist ordinance that we came before the the council, and it was discussed mightily and had a lot of input, but two of the provisions, which really were not controversial at all, involved parkways and trees of the city, including those within the parkway. And so if you damage or destroy a city tree, you can be fined up to seven hundred and fifty dollars and/or put in jail for six months pursuant to one point two eight of the Casper City Code. And there is an exception, though, that for people who who are the property owners behind the parkway, they can actually go out and they can trim or maintain the trees without going through the city, and basically, because we're hoping that they'll do that, and we, the council at that time felt that it would be appropriate that they be able to to keep track of that and not have to inconvenience themselves to come in and say, hey, I'd like to go trim the trees, we've got a branch hanging down too low. So if in fact someone goes further than that, there is a code provision that provides relief and at least a punishment to do to do that. Of course, if they do it and nobody catches them in the act, then the tree's down and it's simply a matter of prosecuting and proving the case.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, I guess as a follow-up to that, could we possibly have that ordinance forward to everybody so that we can review it and make sure that whether it fits or not for the question being asked here tonight?
Be happy to do it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any amendments? Okay, please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number twenty-eight. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, Mayor. We have five exhibits, correspondence from Fleur Tremmel to Jay Carter Napier dated April sixth, twenty twenty-one. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication is published in the Casper Star Tribune dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Exhibit number three, affidavit of website publication is published on the city of Casper website dated April sixth, twenty twenty-one. Exhibit number four, affidavit of notice of conspicuous posting pursuant to Wyoming statute twelve hyphen four hyphen one oh four A, is posted at forty-three seventy South Poplar dated April sixth, twenty twenty-one. And exhibit number five, liquor license application filed March twenty-three, twenty twenty-one.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What this is, is a request for a transfer of ownership between two business entities, LLC proper management doing business as the three oh seven Sunrise, and then two, the new LLC three oh seven Bar, and they, of course, will be doing business as three oh seven Bar. You probably noticed that the address is the same, and so this transfer of ownership will not include a relocation of the of the license.
Counsel will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes, no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of retail liquor license number twenty-eight, please approach the lectern. All right, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the retail liquor license number twenty-eight to please approach the lectern. All right, there being no one to speak for or against, retail liquor license number twenty-eight, I now declare the public hearing closed. The chair would entertain a motion to, by amendment action, authorize the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number twenty-eight.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Gamros, second by Councilwoman Lutz. Discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
Do we need to make note that?
Councilmember Pollock has recused herself from the discussion completely, and I'll note her leaving the room and then when she joins us after the next day.
Okay, she'll recuse herself off the next one also. Okay. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of transfer of three retail liquor licenses and the issuance of three bar and grill liquor licenses. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have fifteen exhibits. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Fleur Tremmel to Jay Carter Napier dated April sixth, twenty twenty-one. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication is published in the Casper Star Tribune dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Exhibit number three, affidavit of website publication is published in, on the city of Casper website dated April sixth, twenty twenty-one. Exhibit number four, affidavit of notice of conspicuous posting pursuant to Wyoming statute twelve hyphen four hyphen one oh four is posted at thirty-two forty-three Talon Drive dated April sixth, twenty twenty-one. Exhibit number five, affidavit of notice of conspicuous posting pursuant to Wyoming statute twelve hyphen four hyphen one oh four is posted at sixty-one hundred East Second Street dated April sixth, twenty twenty-one. Exhibit number six, affidavit of notice of conspicuous posting pursuant to Wyoming statute twelve hyphen four hyphen one oh four is posted at forty-three thirty East Second Street dated April sixth, twenty twenty-one. Exhibit number seven, affidavit of notice of conspicuous conspicuous posting pursuant to Wyoming statute twelve hyphen four hyphen one oh four is posted at thirty-five eighty East Second Street dated April sixth, twenty twenty-one. Exhibit number eight, affidavit of notice of conspicuous posting pursuant to Wyoming statute twelve hyphen four hyphen one oh four A is posted at one three seven five C Y Avenue dated April sixth, twenty twenty-one. Exhibit number nine, affidavit of notice of conspicuous posting pursuant to Wyoming statute twelve hyphen four hyphen one oh four is posted at thirty-two forty-three Talon Drive dated April sixth, twenty twenty-one. Exhibit number ten, liquor license application filed. Exhibit number 10, liquor license application filed March 8, 2021, that's retail number 12. Exhibit number 11, liquor license application filed March 8, 2021, that's bar and grill number two. Exhibit number 12, liquor license application filed March 8, 2021, that's retail number 15. Exhibit number 13, liquor license application filed March 8, 2021, that's bar and grill number 12. Exhibit number 14, liquor license application filed March 17, 2021, that's retail number 23. And exhibit number 15, liquor license application filed March 8, 2021, bar and grill number 15.
All right, thank you. Need some water after that. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you can see, this is not a standard transfer that we are dealing with tonight. This, this is a, a series of transfers and requests for new bar and grill licenses that a single proprietor is, is looking for, many of which are currently owned by the, by the petitioner. If it pleases council, while I won't have a list of 15 items to read, I do think it necessitates a recounting for you and our listeners as to what this chain of transfers and requests is, is all about. And as you can see in your memo, I'll, I'll just be following right along with regard to what we presented to you in your, in your memo in the, in this regard. Johnson Restaurant Group is, is the, the parent company, if you will, that is, is, is working on all this. And I should tell you, if, if indeed council does approve all of these items, this will culminate in the development of three new liquor establishments in the community, as well as a, a new and separate eatery in the community as well. And we will still, the council, that is, will still have two bar and grill licenses to dispense at your, at your pleasure, should you get applications for said licenses. So you're, you're not eliminating all of your bar and grills by following through with this, you will still have two on hand to dispense as you see fit. So as far as the series of applications are concerned, we are looking at a transfer of location for retail license number 12, Fire Rock Hospitality Group doing businesses, Fire Rock Steakhouse, to Mesa Liquors doing business as Mesa Liquors, located at 3243 Talon Drive, which is the new development that's taking place over on the west side, Suite 200. There is a request for a new bar and grill license for Fire Rock Hospitality, doing businesses, Fire Rock Steakhouse. There is a transfer request for a local, for a location of retail license number 15 for the Old Chicago Restaurant, to Wyoming Discount Liquor, which will be located at 4330 East Second Street. There is a new bar and grill request, license request, for Old Chicago to backfill the transfer if it's approved. There is a request for a transfer of license number 23 from CY Discount Liquor to the new location at 1375 CY Avenue, Suite 100, which would be the, the Old Ridley's building. And then finally, Mr. Mayor, there is a request for a new bar and grill license to be located at 3243 Talon Drive, Suite 400, however, in this circumstance, for the business known, that will be known as Fuzzy's Taco Shop. And with that, Mr. Mayor, in order to not consolidate but compartmentalize comments that the public may have, one way or the other, with each of these connected requests, we are suggesting that the public hearing tonight will be divided into three segments, although it will still be one public hearing for all intents and purposes. And, and that's my report. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. To help simplify this public hearing, we will first listen to public comments on the transfer of the retail licenses, then the new bar and grill licenses. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the transfer of location of retail number 12, from 6100 East Second to 3243 Talon Drive, retail number 15, from 3580 East Second to 4330 East Second, and retail 23, from 840 CY Avenue to 1375 CY Avenue, to please approach the lectern.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council. My name is John Johnson, I reside at 1917 Rustic Court. I would ask permission to add this, if I may.
Absolutely.
I'm here to speak on behalf of Johnson Restaurant Group and the related entities. Couple of years ago, we came to council and we asked to hold, asked council to set aside two bar and grill licenses so that we could do Mesa Liquor and Fuzzy's Taco Shop by moving the Fire Rock license. So they, so this is kind of tied to the retail license that we're talking, the three retails that we're talking about. In this last year, a couple of opportunities have come before us, and one of them is we purchased the Ridley's building on CY and we're going to, you're gonna, what you're looking at is the redevelopment of that property. And we're going to put a 20,000 square foot Ace Hardware in, we're going to relocate Once Upon a Child, we don't own that business, but the lady that does needs more space. And then we want to move CY Liquor and the Backdoor Lounge over to that location. And that is the redevelopment that you're looking at there. So those are our licenses, the, the other one that came before us this last year, just most recently, was the Mark's Work Warehouse Building, just east of the Car Wash. So that's the relocation of the Old Chicago retail license to that building. So those are the retail licenses, so we'll, I think since that's what we're talking about, that's what I'm kind of hopefully helping paint a picture of. So Mesa Liquor will be next to Fuzzy's Taco in that development. Wyoming Discount Liquor will be in the Mark's Work Warehouse Building, and then CY will just relocate up the street CY from its current location to the redevelopment of the Ridley's building. And for any questions?
Any questions? Councilwoman Gamros.
Thank you, Mayor. No questions, just appreciate the investment in the community, ambitious plan, excited to see some of these buildings being used, and thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Nell.
I, I have just a couple of questions. It struck me when I was looking at it, I think Once Upon a Child is, it's not a daycare, it's a second-hand store, right?
Right, correct.
Okay, because that was a little alarming when I first looked at it.
Yeah.
And, and secondly, the, are you, what do you do with the old back door, will it stay where it's at as well?
No, no, that whole thing will be relocated, the whole, the whole operation, the CY retail store and the Backdoor Lounge will be relocated to the, to the Ridley's building.
Excellent. Well, and I'd like to, to just jump on Kyle, on his back and say this is, that's an amazing piece of work for that building, so, good for you.
Thank you. And, and one thing I'd like to add real quick before I end is that we did have to get permission from both Ace Hardware and Once Upon a Child to be able to have the liquor store next to them, so that was one of the first hurdles we had to clear on that, so.
When this is, well, I'll wait, I'm sorry, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else wishing to speak in favor? All right, at this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the transfer, as stated previously, of locations of retail number 12, retail number 15, or retail number 23, to please approach the lectern. All right, at this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issuance of bar and grill number two, with proposed location of 6100 East Second Street, bar and grill number 12, with proposed location of 3580 East Second Street, or bar and grill number 10, with proposed location of 3243 Talon Drive, to please approach the lectern. That's in favor of.
Mr. Mayor, council, I'm back. Anyway, I don't know if this is speaking twice or if we're supposed to do this, but, so these, these bar and grills that we're talking about now, or two of those are going to backfill the retail transfers that we were just talking about, one being to Old Chicago and the other one being to Fire Rock. And then the third one is going to the new business, Fuzzy's Taco Shop, over in Mesa Plaza.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions on this? All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of? Okay, at this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issuance of bar and grill number two, bar and grill number 12, or bar and grill number 10, as previously stated, please approach the lectern. Okay, there being no others to speak for or against the transfer of location of the three retail liquor licenses and the issuance of the three bar and grill licenses, I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the transfer of location for retail liquor license number 12, retail number 15, and retail number 23, as well as the issuance of bar and grill number two, bar and grill number 12, and bar and grill number 10.
Still moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Cathy, seconded by Councilman Nell. Discussion? Councilman Nell.
At this time, so we did receive an email from, I believe it was the, I don't know what, father at the Catholic Church concerning the liquor store, and I, I received one. And I guess I just wanted it noted that I did receive it, I did take into account, but I also know that where this liquor store is going, there used to be one in the building, exactly. And actually, it, this is even moving further away from the church and the school, looking at your design, so it's going to be further away from it. So I just wanted it on record that yes, I received the email and, and I did bring it up.
Well, I had to, that, because I received the same one, I believe it was the principal of St. Anthony's. And what I'd like to point out on that is where St. Anthony's used to be located a block away from there, and next to a church and next to their offices are another liquor licen, or liquor establishment right there, not to mention the Elks Club, Knights of Columbus, they're all within a block of it. So I understand what she's saying, but at the same time, same as what it was before.
I agree.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay, any amendments? Any abstention or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With Councilman Pollock recusing herself, motion passed.
Thank you. Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance amending section 13.04.060.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading the ordinance just read.
Still moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, seconded by Councilwoman Ingretson. Counsel will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. All right, discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance approving the vacation and replat, creating the central services addition number two.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading the ordinance just read.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Cathy, seconded by Councilwoman Lutz. Counsel will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Okay, any discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
Counsel will now discuss the resolution for the amendment to the new Delta Edition subdivision agreement. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it will be open for discussion by council. Please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution approving amendment number two to the new Delta Edition subdivision agreement dated August 3, 1999.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution just read.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Gamros, seconded by Vice Mayor Pacheco. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As discussed in the work session last time council met, this is a rather unique request of council's consideration this evening as well. In this circumstance, the, your predecessors of a number of years ago passed a subdivision agreement that removed from consideration uses in the area in question here pursuant to the zoning that basically disallowed certain zoning classifications, or excuse me, businesses that would ordinarily fit in this classification. I think that was back in 1999. Moving forward to now, we have quite a bit of commercial development going on on Lot One, wherein the petitioners are suggesting that those same restrictions that were excluded, excuse me, uses that were excluded from the subdivision agreement of 1999 be brought back into the current subdivision agreement in order for developments to occur that otherwise would be not allowed. The Planning Commission considered this question and proposed for your consideration that those types of requests and those types of uses be, be allowed in the C2 zoning designation pursuant to Lot One only. And in that regard, we do have the petitioners here with us this evening. Should you have any questions or should they want to provide comment in support of the subdivision agreement that again would allow for those uses to be brought back into the zoning classification of C2, again for Lot One only.
Okay, thank you. So we have several people that are wishing to speak tonight, so if I could ask John Ramsey to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, chamber. I'm the president of the HOA, that is the long and atop their Stafford Court. We would like to convey that you keep the restrictions on. I've talked to Mr. Axeland a couple of times, we're going to have him speak at our meeting in May, and he's going to talk to the homeowners as far as what their plans are for there and what they'd like to see go on. I am also a homeowner, so I have to kind of wear two hats here and be careful who I'm talking for, but I just wanted to tell the council that the HOA Association is against lifting these restrictions, that in 1999, the council came up with this and kind of made everybody happy. And so I think there's room for that still without lifting these restrictions, but it is a new time and a new council. And that's really all I wanted to tell you, that we are against lifting these, especially all restrictions. There's already been two- There's already been two, I believe, for the Loaf and Jug and the bank variances, or whatever you want to call them, and it's slowly nibbling away. And so with those that have already taken place, I still believe there's some room there that we don't have to lift all restrictions, which maybe could be achieved after the meeting on the 20th of May with Mr. Axeland and our association. That's I taking questions, but that's all I wanted to say.
Oh, okay. Councilman Gamros.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you also for coming this evening. I guess I would just be curious to know the stance of the HOA. What are the specific reasons other than, you know, the process that went through in 1999? Are there specific reasons why the HOA would oppose the lifting of restrictions? And I'm also curious, the arrangement that was created in 1999, I wonder how many of those original, you know, those homeowners are still? Oh, still that are still there from 99?
Yes. Yeah, they like to say there's been a couple that was lifted. One had to do, I believe, with the drive-ups. The bank does have to have a drive-up.
Sir, could I have you speaking to the mic? I'm sorry.
So the bank was allowed to have drive-ups, which also allowed the coffee shop, I believe, that's there now to also have a drive-up window, that of course. I wasn't in Casper at the time that the convenience store, Loaf and Jug, whatever you, at that time it was, I guess there was quite a hoopla about that. But that was the other one that was a variance that was allowed in, I believe, to my understanding. We're against the liquor sales there. And then down near the bottom of the list, there's a kind of a clump of tattoo parlors, massage parlors, piercing, body piercings shops, adult bookstores, you know, there was things that we just didn't think we needed, as you looked at the picture, literally in our backyard. Now, there are four properties that butt up against this, but there's still a whole line of homes there that are affected by this, even though they may have a backyard to Lot Two. So it's just something we don't want to see right in our backyard. After the May 20 meeting and Trust Land and Development tells us what their plans are for it, maybe attitudes will change, but a majority of the homeowners and a unanimous across the board of all the officers are against the lifting of all, and I'm stressing that word, all restrictions, that would throw it back into the C2. The subdivision part of this that kind of made it a C2 of sorts, but with these heavier restrictions, has helped with our home values. Those on the border of Lot Two have even stated how they felt that this would hurt home values. No, none have probably went down. Some maybe have went up, but the point is, the prices of the homes have not went down because it's an area that these restrictions may help in prospective home buyers. Nobody can tell the future, but we just don't want those restrictions.
Thank you. Going back to my first question, I'm sorry, I might not have been as clear. One of the curiosities I had was the original agreement in August of 99 that satiated all the homeowners. At the time, I was curious how many of those homeowners in 99 are still there present day, but I don't think that's necessary because you brought up a second question I had. I've never lived in an HOA, and so I guess I don't know what that looks like, but you're using the pronoun "we" to describe the stance of the HOA, and it sounds like there's probably surveys or something you do of the community. And so I would be very interested if you are, you know, surveying all the residents in that area, if you have data about their attitudes and, you know, I think we have some folks that are going to speak to us this evening, so I imagine we'll hear some opinions this evening, but if you have, I'm a data guy, so if you have surveys that you've distributed to the community, I'd be very interested in seeing what the responses were and stuff like that.
Yeah, I was hoping that this would come up in June, which is what I conveyed to Mr. Axeland was that I wanted him to talk to the association so that the rumors that have been flying for the last year get put to rest. And I felt that that would be a way to go about this, so that then, after he had spoke to us, that at our annual meeting with all the members, that we could take a vote on how we wanted to then go forward as far as this development, whether we wanted to still fight for our restrictions or let it go to C2 with whatever they have planned for it there. I know we would not be for the bookstores and that type of stuff, and I don't feel that Trust Land and Development is out to stick adult bookstores and massage parlors and stuff in there. I mean, for what has already been built, I find it now, I'm going to put on my homeowner's hat, I find it as a benefit for our area. So I have to keep my HOA president hat on though, because I'm here speaking for the HOA as the group. I can get you that, but I would ask that I do that at the May 20 meeting, because that is when people who may be wintering in Arizona or, you know, somewhere else is generally back home. And that's why we hold the meeting in May. I'd be glad to give you how the meeting goes and what the people present voted to do. Would like to say, this is kind of preached it forward on me, and so I've met with the officers, I've met with those that are at home through that area up there, and all of them are stating they want the restrictions left because of the wording of all restrictions will be lifted. And that's not what we want. We don't want to see all of these restrictions lifted. I'll put on my homeowner's hat, and for what is being discussed as a wine boutique, specialty type beverage shop, I don't have a problem with it as a homeowner. But as president of the HOA, I still have to stand here and say, I don't want all restrictions lifted. I feel there's a compromise out there. And whether it's done by you folks or at the May 20 meeting, I don't know. But the meeting is now, and that's why I'm stating, we are against having the restrictions lifted because of the wording of all.
Councilwoman Inger Breton.
So I have a couple of thoughts. I mean, this lot has essentially been developed. You've got- I have some thoughts. This lot has already been developed as a commercial lot. You've got a bank, you've got a coffee shop and things of that nature. And to my knowledge, I don't believe that we're considering lifting all of the restrictions other than probably doing a variance, but I question quite a bit about, you keep saying it's in your backyard. Can you specifically tell me what home that this is the backyard? Because I'm in that area frequently, and the backyard is literally from the Orthopedic Center. So Lot Two is people's backyards, but Lot One, the one that we're specifically discussing, is not. And so I think that it's reasonable to assume that we're not going to be putting in random things.
Sir, again, could I have you just-
If you look at your map there, and you notice where Wyoming Boulevard is coming down from the top to the lower left of the picture, there's four lots up there at the top that their property lines do come down, that is their backyards. And it butts up there then to, there's a drainage type system, a pipeline type, you know, easement through there. But that is four, four properties, backyards, and then like you say, there are the others that do, like you say, are adjacent to the Orthopedic Center. So there is and are our backyards there affected by this development. Now, it's not so much maybe of what is planned to be done right now, but by lifting all restrictions, that leaves it blowed wide open for these other items that are mentioned in the C2 that is allowed to step in, should this property ever change hands, owners, leases or whatever, just allows what we got accomplished in 99 and the council worked hard to do to satisfy everybody. It just knocks it all away. And so it's not so much, my hat's coming off as president and as homeowner is going on, it's not so much of what is going on and planned for now, but four years down the road, five years down the road, I don't know who will be operating in these stores that the C2 allows in. Do I make sense?
I just believe that we're looking at more of a variance versus just lifting every single ordinance off of that. And so we're seeking something considerably different than what I think that you're thinking is going to happen.
Well, not by the letter I received from the city. It is, all restrictions will be lifted. The subdivision agreement that was made is going away, and so the lot will revert to a C2. And if you look then at what C2 allows in as a business, those are things in there that are some that we just object to. And I think you would probably object to also if it was adjacent to your backyard. I don't know where you live, but I'm just saying, I don't think there would be something you would want either. And that is why in 1999, as this addition was being built, the lot was empty, but we knew the city would grow. And so we tried to head off some problems then as that we are now.
Councilman Nell.
Thank you, Mayor. Sir, I do want to speak to you specifically because you are the president of the HOA. I happen to be the liaison for the Planning and Zoning Commission as well, and I was at that meeting. And everything I heard is nobody wants a liquor store in there. Nobody wants a liquor store near that school. Nobody wants a liquor store near the home. I listened to all the arguments. What I'm telling, what I'm saying to you is, we have a responsibility to our citizens, to our homeowners. We also have a responsibility to our business owners that are building infrastructure in our city. This is the busiest highway in our city. This lot is right on the busiest highway in our city. There is a huge buffer between that and your backyards. You have all of Lot Two, you have Casper Orthopedics, the strip mall's already built, and this isn't like somebody in the Planning and Zoning Commission said, we're going to have a bunch of drunks laying on the sidewalk. This is a high-end winery liquor store with high-end patrons that aren't going to be sitting on the sidewalk with a bottle of wine in their hand. It's not a liquor store. It's, I mean, I'm trying to balance as a councilman to protect your interests and to protect the interests of our business people. And where this lot sits, for me-
If it expanded just a little bit more, you'd see the four homes I'm talking about. And then, but I hear what you're saying.
I've driven it and sat there.
I understand that. But you see, when it goes to a C2, maybe this current development is not going to call it a liquor store or be classified as a liquor store. It's like I said, it's three, four, five years down the road.
And Ms. Inger Breton did have it wrong, because the C2 opens it up, and I, this isn't a variance. And I understand exactly what you're saying. I get it.
And now, I'll take off the president's hat and put on my homeowner's hat, and I have no qualms as the homeowner that my house is actually cut in half by that 300-foot line. And I'm quite pleased to see what has been built there. And Mr. Axeland has been very good at describing to me what they want to do. Now, there is going to be a specialty beer, beer, there is going to be hard spirits, there is going to be consumption on site. I'm sorry, but that still makes it a liquor store. Okay? And I don't care if the booze is costing you $90 a bottle for the wine or 90 cents with ripple on the label. It's still going to be, a liquor store will be allowed to be in there, because that's the way the C2 will classify as to what's able to be done there. Do you see what my rebuttal-
Sir, I absolutely understand where you're coming from. I promise to you, I do. I just want you to understand where I'm coming from. I'm trying to balance effectively for you and the homeowners in that area and for the business people who have also invested a tremendous amount more money than any of you have in those homes. And so when we're trying to balance that, and this particular lot is right on the busiest highway in town, I'm going to have a hard time not wanting to see that happen. I just, I'm just being fair and honest with you.
That's your choice.
So, thanks.
Any other discussion? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Marty Axeland.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Vice Mayor Pacheco, and members of the city council. My name is Martin Axeland, and I'm the Real Estate and Property Director for True Land and Realty. As the owner and developer of the compass, we're here tonight to ask for your consideration and approval in releasing Lot One of the Topol Edition from the conditional zoning restrictions currently enacted on the property. In order to share our vision, I'd like to quickly provide some background on the compass project as a whole. True Land and Realty has developed a site that now houses a state-of-the-art hilltop bank location. We've partnered with several local entrepreneurs to open new businesses and to expand their already successful ones. We've developed a beautiful site that now includes 45 trees, 268 shrubs, 198 ornamental grasses, and 116 perennials. We believe our commitment to developing top-tier projects is evident from anyone that visits the compass. We now have the opportunity to partner with a local business owner who would like to open a boutique wine and spirit store to serve that area. This business would fit our model for a high-end tenant, however, our current restrictions do not allow us to move forward with this opportunity. The tenant would be located within an existing building with a maximum square footage of 1,072 square feet. In preparation for today's meeting, I have spoken with the president of the neighboring homeowners association to share our vision for the compass and our intentions for today. I've expressed our commitment to being a good neighbor and stewards to our community. Through this process, we do know that a few residents have expressed concerns over declining home prices in the area due to our development. I brought with me today a couple of letters from Casper Appraisers giving their impression of home values in the surrounding neighborhoods around the compass. These letters show that property values have remained steady and that our development has had no negative impacts on property values. The compass is intended to be a vibrant, dynamic, and community-driven gathering place. We've heard tremendous support from area residents for a boutique wine and spirit store, and I've brought with me tonight a couple of letters supporting our efforts to remove these conditional zoning restrictions. Our hope for today is that you will approve our request and allow Lot One of the Topol Edition to be treated like any other C2 zone property in Casper. I'd like to thank you for your consideration and answer any questions you may have with my remaining time.
Councilman Gamros.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you also, Marty, for being here and speaking this evening. I guess I'm focusing on the last statement is that you'd like to open it up, C2 for all uses, I guess, so does that mean that your organization would not support collaboration with the HOA to just lift certain restrictions that may accommodate your current development plans? You know, are you thinking further ahead that there may be additional uses in the future that, you know, we don't cover during this process, or just curious to know where you sit on that? Thank you.
You know, as we've gone through this process, we've looked at, looked at the site, and I think our goal is to be treated like any other C2 zone property. I think that's our goal. Uh, in this case, we have a tenant in the wings that would like to move into this area, uh, which has pressed us forward on this issue. But ultimately, we want to be treated like any other property. But we do have this, this tenant ready to go, ready to move in and ready to start construction.
Any other questions?
I do have, just for the record, those letters from the appraisers as well as a couple of letters from, uh, members of the community.
Councilwoman Inger-Bretson.
So what would happen later on, say, one of the tenants decided to move out? And then we lifted this for you and then, um, and it moved in an adult bookstore. I mean, I can understand why they would be concerned. I too would be concerned. So that's what's going to prevent that from happening.
No, True Land and Realty is, is interested in building and developing high-end, uh, long-term developments. We have no interest in selling this property. We have an affiliate company located on site, uh, and we are gonna be there for the long, the long haul. So that question, we have no intention of selling, and so there is no other answer than that. We are, we are in it for the long term.
Councilman Kathy.
Are, are you still looking at potentially putting some type of, uh, eatery there on the northwest corner?
Yes, sir. Uh, we had struggles with that with, uh, some of the troubles of 2020 and, and the pandemic. Uh, but that is still our intent. Uh, 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 an establishment that would benefit the area and be a good complement to the other, uh, the other tenants.
Would you anticipate that eatery being one that would potentially have, uh, either a bar and grill or a restaurant liquor license?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Uh, Jens Hansen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Uh, my name is Jens Hansen. I live at 1342 Heathrow Avenue, which is directly behind Lot Two of the map up there. I have two children, eight and 10 years old, that attend Summit Elementary just down the street. Uh, and I'm here this evening to fully voice my support for removing the zoning restrictions on Lot One. Uh, since moving into the neighborhood probably five years ago, having some type of a, a business like what's being discussed, a higher-end retail liquor establishment, has just always made sense to me, to my wife, to the people in the neighborhood, uh, that I interact with on a regular basis. As far as just a, a convenient place to stop and get a bottle of wine or something like that on the way home from work. I, I've worked for Hilltop Bank. I am familiar with True Land and Realty and, and the organization, and I have full faith and confidence that whoever they invite into our neighborhood is not going to, uh, cause a detriment to, to our neighborhood, to, to our home values, or just to the general way things are in our neighborhood. It's, this property is, is down the hill from where I am, um, there on Heathrow. It's behind a, a retaining wall. I just can't possibly imagine that this is going to detrimentally impact us via noise or traffic or, or anything like that. I really can't. And, uh, I, speaking a little bit to Mr. Ramsey's comments, and I do agree with him in many regards as far as businesses that we would not want to see in that location. And I don't believe that, that we ever would or we will. But I don't, I'm not sure if I'm part of a different HOA, but I was certainly never asked by the HOA how I felt about, about that. I'm in that 300-foot zone. Um, and, and so the HOA certainly doesn't speak for all the residents in that neighborhood. So with that said, I, I'm fully in favor of removing those restrictions and allowing development to continue on Lot One.
Any questions? Uh, Councilman Kathy.
What I would be interested in have, excuse me, with the addition of the bank and the Metro Coffee there, and due to the fact that there is that big retaining wall there, have you actually noticed, say, an increase in noise from that traffic? Or has the way that wall sits there actually had a decrease in your noise level from Wyoming Boulevard?
Question. I sure haven't noticed any increase. Probably if, you know, I haven't thought about it, I'll have to go notice more specifically, but it's possible that it has reduced some of the noise that we get off Wyoming Boulevard. You know, I, I guess I couldn't say specifically, but I certainly haven't noticed any increase as a result of the development on that lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Greg Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor Freel, City Council members. Uh, my name is Greg Dixon, 2080 Preserve Circle here in Casper. And I'm obviously speaking, uh, in favor of, uh, True Land and Realty and, uh, and the Compass at Centennial Hills. You know, we are, uh, as, as a Hilltop Officer, I'm President and CEO of the bank. So I was involved in the development of, of the bank itself, but certainly, um, you know, had a, had a keen interest in that whole development. But, uh, I can tell you that there isn't a more respected and respectful developer than True Land and Realty. Their intent is to make sure that not only the subdivision itself does well and, and has long-term tenants, but also satisfies the entire community, um, at least southeast Casper. So, um, I'm just here to ask, uh, like Jens and like Marty, I certainly respect what Mr. Ramsey was saying, so appreciate those remarks. But, uh, uh, we will be good neighbors. The bank will be good neighbors. And I know fully that True Land and Realty will be very respected and respectful. Um, thank you.
Any questions? All right. Bob Sirkovnik.
Thank you.
I've been practicing. Thanks.
And I, and I'll give you one, Mr. Mayor, I'll give you one quick. I hope you know probably where I work at too. I work for Hilltop Bank and I, I live at 5210 Blackmore Road. I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you. You know, I can tell you from my experiences that, that similar to, to Marty's comments is that, that the development of the people that are involved with this development, um, will be very, very respectful and will treat that property, uh, with the greatest respect and, and help build that community around there. You know, I listened to John Johnson talk and it brought up the, uh, I'm also involved with, uh, St. Anthony's, uh, as a board member. And, you know, this is not like this, this is not a bar grill that's gonna be right next to a, a church or a, or anything. So the traffic will not be hugely impacted. With all due respect, I, 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 I think that just the comments, uh, from the HOA are very deserving, but, um, I appreciate, uh, Councilman Neal's, uh, comments about it is a very busy highway and, and we have to be, uh, develop those properties because that's what makes Casper thrive. And, you know, it's, uh, I don't think the traffic area is gonna be huge. I do drive by that place quite a bit. I actually jog around that area too. Um, so I don't think, I, I love Stafford Court. It's a beautiful area. But I think this will only add to that. So, um, with that, I'll just say thank you for the opportunity to come and talk. I know it's getting late in the hour and I appreciate your time and take care. Great job announcing my name.
Thanks. Any questions? Oh, no, you're good. Thank you. Try not to butcher the next one. Charlie Shop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and Council. Um, I'm Charlie Shop. Uh, I live at 1235 Donegal. I'm also the principal owner of Remax Group. And, uh, I have been involved with this, these pieces of ground that we're talking about tonight for a number of years. I was involved with the sale of Lot One from the previous owners. I've also been involved with, uh, development of part of the Stafford Square, uh, Association. The lots along Wyoming Boulevard, uh, are, are presently zoned C1. I took those lots that are zoned C1 along Wyoming Boulevard, and I developed twin homes on those. So I have been involved with this property in this area for a long period of time. I'm very pleased to be involved with True Land and Realty in the, uh, development of this Compass project. I'm very supportive of dropping these restrictions, uh, that are affecting Lot One. And with that, I would leave it up for any questions or comments to me.
Any questions or comments?
So which side of this issue are you on?
I'm on, I'm on the side of dropping these restrictions.
Okay.
On C2.
The way you stated that, I thought you wanted them to remain. So I wanted to make sure that I got you right.
No, sir. I, I did bring up that I have been involved with the Stafford Square, uh, development in there and, uh, bring it, bring it to council's attention that those lots there along Stafford, uh, well, on Stafford Court there, the back up to Wyoming Boulevard are still zoned C1. And it was brought up earlier about the, uh, concern about what would happen down, down the line in case someone would move out of these individual, um, units or if the trues would ever sell this off. And I do want to bring it to your attention that part of the Stafford Square Association is zoned C1.
Okay. Councilman Neal.
Thank you. Um, while we have you, are you, were you involved in the sale of Lot Two as well?
I was not involved with the sale of Lot Two.
The reason I ask is when this initially came to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they were trying to C2 both lots. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, in their wisdom, uh, eliminated Lot Two in the discussion. And that's why we're just talking about one tonight, because I think had we been talking about Lot Two as well, this would be a whole different discussion.
I understand.
So lucky for us, they were smart enough to, to break those off before they brought it to us. But I was just curious if you'd been involved in that one also.
No, sir.
Okay. Thanks. I appreciate your time.
You betcha.
Any other questions? All right. Okay, we'll move on to discussion. Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of thoughts, um, since I represent Ward Three. So this is right up in my neighborhood too. And, and just have the conversation quickly. I think we have to, uh, address the fact of, I always try to look at both sides before I make a decision on, on anything. And looking at the, um, understanding of where the homeowners are coming from and being sympathetic and empathetic of understanding where their concerns are. Um, and then we weigh that against, um, the decision that was made in 1999, which was over 20 years ago. Um, and I think Councilman Gamroth made some good points that there may, are not currently a lot of the people that are there still. I think when we look at how time marches on and how we start looking at economic development that we need in our community, it's so badly needed. And so I think, um, when I look at these things and we see that the true company, among other companies, um, have been willing to invest in our community to help it to be better equipped economically. Um, and so for that reason, um, I, I certainly understand the point of view of where, um, our, the homeowners association is coming from. But for me, I'm looking at it as an economic diversification opportunity and an investment. I think it's a good investment, and I think it's a good thing for our community, and it's a good thing for the east side of Casper. Um, and eventually, I think in the long run, we will take a look at that and we will see that it's gonna be a good thing for, for that area. I know a few years ago, and Liz, you can probably remind me of that, um, I, I remember when we changed, um, South Pop, or Popular Street to C2. And there were many, uh, community members that came out saying, uh, we don't want you to change this to C2. This is gonna be terrible for us and, and so forth. And, and so I think this is an opportunity for us to move forward. Um, so with that in mind, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this amendment to, to move forward and, and hopefully we can do some good stuff in that area. So I think the, uh, true company for, for coming in and, and, um, making some big investments in that area, I think it'll, it'll benefit us very well. So, thank you.
Councilman Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. I also think it's important to note that, um, he did bring us some, um, some letters from some appraisals on the property. And I think that, um, not only is it not a detriment to the neighborhood, I think it's gonna help it. It, it's not gonna hurt it being there. It, it's in an ideal place on the busiest highway that we have in this city, and it's gonna create a nice buffer for those homes. Um, it's a no-brainer for me, so.
Councilman Gamros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm curious, would I be able to call, uh, Mr. Axon back up if he's willing? I just have one, one question that helps me further inform my own personal.
Sure. Mr. Axon.
Thanks, Marty. Sorry. Just wanted to make sure you got your exercise this evening. Was curious, the boutique, uh, that you said you had wanted, uh, you know, the reason we're having this discussion. You said they were waiting in the wings. I mean, once council does their business, they're ready to, you know, move in and start, okay. Uh, I, I, you know, um, I certainly don't want to hold up business because I absolutely agree with all of the, um, you know, discussion that's taken place about economic development. I think a lot of people have shown up and shown their support for it. So I, I think there's very few reasons not to, um, move forward with this amendment other than the fact that I think it's a shame that this HOA organization might meet here in the next month. And again, I don't have any, uh, uh, experience with HOAs, but if, if what this annual meeting is, is a convention of hundreds of people that live in the neighborhood, I think it'd be a shame if, uh, we weren't able to get their input and, um, you know, at least make them feel heard. But, um, but I absolutely agree with, uh, you know, the discussion that's taken place about the economic development, about the reputation of the true, uh, Realtor group and, uh, you know, development group and stuff. So, um, just wanted confirmation on that. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Ramsey and I have been speaking, he's been wonderful, uh, since the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, meeting. And so I offered, uh, any level of, of dialogue to any member of the HOA prior to that meeting as well as this one. Like I said, Mr. Ramsey has been absolutely wonderful to speak with, uh, but they have had opportunity to reach out and, and dialogue. But I am looking forward to meeting with all of them in May.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. Any amendments? All right. Please cast your vote. In a moment. And please record a vote.
With Councilmember Pollock and Mayor Freel abstaining, motion passed.
Okay, please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 12B1, a replac creating Mountain Plaza pathway addition. And the following five, uh, five items are for contracts for the cleaning of, up of weeds and trash-covered properties. Item 12B2, AAA landscaping. Item 12B3, B&amp;B sales and services. Item 12B4, Brian's Go-To Service. Item 12B5, Two Brothers Lawn, Lawn Services. Item 12B6, extreme landscaping. Item 12B7, a contract amendment with HGR Engineering for the Metropolitan Planning Organization's Public Trans, Public Participation Plan. Item 12B8, a contract with Zonar Systems for the Automated Vehicle Location System for the refuse collection and bailfill fleets. Item 12B9, outside-city contract with J and R and Heather Boils, um, I believe that was a trust. Item 12B10, outside-city water and sewer contract with Ja, Jacob and Sadie Carson. And item 12B11, approving the Wyoming Association of Risk Management Joint Powers Board Agreement.
Chair to entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
Go move. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Pollock, seconded by Councilwoman Lutz. Mr. City Manager, would you like to make a comment on the inabs? Okay. Any abstention or nay votes? And please cast your vote. Please record a vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
At this time, we ask council members to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest. Councilwoman Inger-Bretson.
I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
Councilman Gamros.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Uh, I was unable to attend the Child Advocacy Project Pinwheel Ceremony. Um, I believe we were all invited to, a few, a few weeks ago. Uh, but Stacy Nelson, the executive director over there, was gracious enough to give me the tour, give me a tour of their facility last week. So, uh, just really appreciated all the information, um, that she shared as well as, uh, just, uh, remind the community of all the implications. information that she shared, as well as just remind the community of all the important work that the Child Advocacy Project does. I believe it's, you know, an awareness month right now. I, I don't know exactly which one, but I know they're, you know, highlighting their services, and I would agree. They do a lot of good in our community, so thanks for Stacy over there. Also attended the DDA Board meeting last Wednesday. They have some really exciting events coming up this year. Their staff continues to work tirelessly to put on these free community events. And so I just would like to remind citizens who use that facility, whether it's a splash pad in the summer, or ice skating around the Christmas tree in the winter, or just going to the free events down there, the concerts, the farmers markets. If you appreciate that facility and that venue and the events that they hold down there, please consider making a contribution. You know, COVID hit everyone hard, but especially the DDA, because they didn't qualify for some of the PPE and the other assistance that some businesses did. So, and, you know, just struggling. So again, if you appreciate that space, if you appreciate the events down there, I wanted to remind you, there is no city funding that goes towards it. It is only made possible through the generosity of sponsors and citizens like you. So, thank you.
Councilman Neal.
Thank you. Couple of things. We got an inadvertent email today as councilmen, council members, excuse me. And it kind of struck, it struck a chord with me, because, you know, we sit up here and, and we try to do the best we can for our constituents. And we, you know, we weigh things, and, and generally, we try to do what we feel is best for our people, especially when it comes to the majority of our people. And I must say, and this is going to light a fire, I'm sure, but I'm appalled at the Nitrana County School Board. Seventy-five percent of their teachers wanted the masks to go away. Eighty-one percent of the parents of the students wanted the masks to go away. There are at least susceptible people, and yet the board voted against the majority. And I don't think it's right. I don't think it's fair. People are frustrated. They wanted a voice. So that's what I'm doing. I'm going to give them a voice to those people. And, and hopefully, they can revisit it and maybe, maybe do a better job for the people in their district. Also, met with the Casper Museum today, very impressed with what's going on over there. They do have a lot going on in the winter, as Amber can attest to. We were both there today. And the one thing that they ask if, if we could do would be to create a better communication between, you know, maybe the council and them. And so I met with Tim. It, it's not a, a point where we want to commit a council liaison to it. I didn't understand or know at the time that we have a leisure and, leisure and services board. And apparently, we have a liaison there. We've just never met with them. So I was wondering how we would go about maybe reaching out to them and finding out what the needs are for the things that they're looking into, because we don't have a liaison on those boards, so we have no idea. And they, they were feeling a little unheard, and, and I guess I understand that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
I do need to talk to you before you leave. Thanks.
Councilman Kathy.
Went to a Joint Powers Water Board meeting earlier today, and we started discussing capital projects and proposed budget for the Joint Powers Water Board and the facilities. So that will be coming up and coming back to council and potentially adjusting rates to go along with that. The other thing I would like to bring up, this Saturday at 2 o'clock at David Street Station, there will be an award ceremony honoring or presenting the Congressional Badge of Bravery to retired Officer Jacob Carlson and Officer Randy Garrett. And that will be presented by Senator Barasso. And as a good support for the people in blue, I think it would be nice to have the community turn out for that. So I wanted to make that announcement to anybody watching. That's all I've got. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilwoman Lutz.
I thought that's what I said.
Good place to hold events. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I'm getting old. I may have forgot it. So I just, you know.
Councilwoman Lutz.
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Pollock.
Just one question. Looking at the future agenda items, I know last work session, Councilman Johnson had requested a presentation to council about the execution of the DEA grant. And I'm looking, it looks like it is not scheduled till after July 1. Just checking to see if there's any possibility of getting that moved up, expedited a little bit, just because of the volume of citizen engagement and correspondence I'm getting about it. Seems like it's, it's on people's mind quite significantly. So I'm wondering if we might be able to move that up. You know, that's just a question. If it's, if, if our schedules are jam-packed, I understand, but that'd be my only thought tonight.
Can we look at that and see if we can move it up by chance?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, I, the, the challenge that we had in trying to dock it sooner was with regard to the limited space that we have between now and the approval of budget. And we're, we're trying to capitalize on your time so we can get budget direction and design the budget and bring it forward. And so that, that was our biggest struggle with all that.
Understood. I, I can, you know, I can certainly communicate that. But, you know, if, if an opening presents itself, would appreciate keeping that at the top of the list.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Right. Don't you forget it. He didn't skip me this time, Carter, because I warned him. Just a couple of things. Next Thursday, I have the council for people with disabilities. So I look forward to heading to that one. Unfortunately, I was out of town for the LGBTQ meeting, but we got, we did get updated on that, and we're working on a few things, which will be presented, I think, to the council at some point, I think, about SAFE. So we'll be talking about that. The only other thing that I have to say, you know, we certainly have quite a few things that are going on, and not only in our city, but in our country. And I often spend time scrolling through Facebook, and I don't comment a lot, but I know there's a lot of just, I don't know, nastiness. We just ask that our communities remain kind to one another, treat each other with a little bit of care, a little extra care. We may not agree about masks. We may not always agree about how we do things. But I think what we can agree on is that we should be all be treated with a little bit of dignity and respect and kindness. And I think kindness goes a long way. And so maybe using those words, a little bit more kindness will help us get through this a little bit. So, thank you.
Well, everybody took everything I was going to say, with the exception of the water tower up in Barnon is back in service and been repaired. And we had three employees from the water treatment plant that are retiring. So one of them, over 30 years. So anyways, that's all I have for this evening. So the next meeting of the city council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, April 27, 2021, in the council meeting room, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM Tuesday, May 4, 2021, in the council chambers. A notice of an executive session that takes place at this date and during this meeting was given. We have a matter to discuss regarding litigation. Therefore, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session, and at the conclusion of the executive session to reconvene this regular meeting solely for the purposes of adjournment of this regular meeting. Moved by Councilman Neal, seconded by Councilwoman Engbretson. There being a majority of members present, and a motion to adjourn into executive session have been moved and seconded, and that motion requiring a two-thirds majority of council present, please cast your votes. Please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
Agreed, and two-thirds majority of council members present in favor of, in favor of the motion, we are hereby adjourned into executive session.